All right, check one, two, one, two. I think we're on the air and I think we're all good. So, good evening, everyone who's watching. I believe we have forty people in attendance here, which is great. I'm Robin Haniford on the communications officer. So obviously, we typically have Rogers TV broadcasting our council meetings. They were unavailable tonight. I think the producer is out of town. So you're gonna bear with us now. We're doing this for the first time by ourselves. So we may have some technical difficulties from time to time. Firstly, my computer is known to crash every now and then. So if something happens and we have to quickly go off air, just give us ten or fifteen minutes to regroup. Keep an eye on our social media pages. We'll be back up and running. We'll keep you posted. And if something does happen and we do get interrupted, we'll be sure to put the full meeting on our YouTube page tomorrow for anybody to watch. So with that, yeah, please bear with us. We're doing this all for the first time. And with that, Mayor Manuel, I will send it over to you so you can unmute and you can begin the meeting.
Thanks, Robin. I guess before we get going, just a reminder to all the participants to make sure that you are muted while you're not speaking, just to make sure we don't get any unnecessary feedback. So first of all, I'd like to welcome everybody to meeting number five forty-six of the Town of Grand Falls Windsor Council. The first order of business tonight is to call the meeting to order. I'll do that with my gavel slash glass. Any errors or omissions from the adoption of meeting number five forty-five? Hearing none, I'll look for a mover and a seconder.
Counselor Cody.
So move. Okay, it's moved by Counselor Cody Davis and seconded by Deputy Mayor Brown. Any discussion? Hearing none. Before I ask if all are in favor, I'm assuming everybody who's logged on can see everybody as I can. So we should be able to.
No, so, sorry, Mayor Manuel, no. Attendees can only see whoever's on screen, so it's just you at the moment.
I was just gonna say that maybe raising hands was okay, but obviously not. So I'll go ahead and ask all in favor.
Aye.
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 Country-minded. Motion carried. Next order of business is business arising. Any business arising from meeting number five forty-five? No business arising. We'll move into the dispersment report. Counselor Whiffen, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I move the dispersment report for July twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one in the amount of four hundred five thousand, six hundred five and ninety-five cents.
Okay, it's been moved by Counselor Whiffen.
Second, Deputy Mayor Brown.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Brown. Any discussion on the dispersment report? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Country-minded. Motion carried. Moving on to committee reports. First up is community services. Counselor Cody Davis, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The Community Services Committee met on Tuesday, July twenty-seventh, at five P.M. In attendance, myself as the chairperson, Counselor Mark Whiffen, Counselor Sean Feener, Mayor Barry Manuel, Deputy Mayor Mike Brown, Counselor Rod Bennett, and Counselor Holly Dewire. Staff included Darren Finn, Chief Administrative Officer, Robin Haniford, Communications Officer, and Keith Antle, the Director of Community Services. The gymnastics program was first on the agenda. The Director updated the committee on the status of renting a building for the gymnastics program this fall. The building we were looking at fell through and is no longer available. The committee recommends staff work on obtaining another building for the program and report back to the committee at the next community services meeting. Next item was the Participation Community Better Challenge. The Director informed the committee that Grand Falls Windsor won the Participation Community Better Challenge as the most active community in Newfoundland and Labrador, and the winning prize was fifteen thousand dollars. The committee recommends staff formulate a plan as to where this money will be spent to better further our recreational programs and our facilities. Our meeting adjourned at five twenty-five P.M., and I move the recommendations and report of the committee.
Okay, it's been moved by Counselor Cody Davis.
Seconded by Holly Dewire.
Counselor Feener.
Seconded by Counselor Dewire. Any discussion on the community services minutes?
If I could chime in there, Mayor, I don't have.
Yeah, go ahead, Sean.
My hand here. I just wondered where we're to with our situation with the gymnastics building. I understand that the Canadian Tire building that the last one we were looking at is not going to be feasible, and I hope the Director of Public Recreation can let us know about it, community services here. But, you know, we got three hundred-plus athletes, gymnastics athletes, signing up now within a week for registration, and the program runs from September till June. And from what I can understand here, guys, with the best we can offer them right now is the Joe Byrne Memorial Stadium up until December. So, I mean, I think that we're gonna have to look at something drastically, something fast with this billing here. I know like Capital Works pay like a sixty, forty. You know, we might have to soon look at a new billing for the gymnastics program or within the next couple of days, just let it die. Thank you.
Mayor, can I respond?
Yep, go ahead, Counselor Cody Davis.
Thank you. Yeah, Counselor Feener, I certainly understand where you're coming from. I have been in communication with our new manager, Lawrence Ducey, on the gymnastics program. There are several options that we're looking at. It's certainly not dead and certainly would not want that message to get out to the gymnastics group because that is not even a consideration at this point. We are looking at every possible idea that we can come up with to continue to run that program. The Joe Byrne Stadium has been talked about, to continue into the fall at least. We have not even put a deadline as to when, you know, the stadium would not be available anymore to gymnastics. That has not been discussed at this point. There are several other locations that we are talking about and that Lawrence and the Director of Community Services, Keith Antle, have been looking at. It was hugely disappointing that the building that we had a lease agreement signed for fell through. Unfortunately, for gymnastics and for us, it fell through, but there is another business, a long-term lease agreement signed for a business going into that building, which is great news for the town as well. So, you know, it was just, it's just been bad luck, really, with that program. We are totally one-hundred percent committed to the gymnastics program and all of the children who are involved in that program, and we are diligently working to find a solution and a permanent location for that group. So we are continuing to work on it, and we will be in constant contact with the gymnastics group, and we will let the public know as soon as we have arrangements made.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Cody Davis. Any other comments on the community services minutes? Hearing none, I'd just like to, I guess, add on to the comments of Counselor Feener and Counselor Cody Davis, just for the benefit of people who may be listening and certainly for the record of this meeting. You know, we have been challenged with finding another location for our gymnastics program now for, I'm guessing, it's over two years that we've been looking for a new home, probably a little less than that. We had about six months ago met with some of the gymnastic representatives. I think there were some parents there and one of the coaches, and we had a very good meeting at that time. And, you know, we were very upfront with the challenges that we were having when it comes to finding a new location for gymnastics. The gymnastics program is awesome, really, and we understand that the registration has grown tremendously, and we hope to see it grow. And the last thing we want to see is our gymnastics program go by the wayside. But as we explained to the representatives on hand about six months ago, the potential cost of a new building at this point would be three, four, or five million dollars. And, you know, we are looking at recreational complex feasibility studies, and we have other recreational needs, our aging infrastructure, and everything that we talked about. So gymnastics would certainly be a part of that if nothing comes up in the short term. But we have been looking high and low and all over. And if anybody has any suggestions of buildings that you think would be suitable for gymnastics in a reasonable drive time period, by all means, let us know. I don't think you'll be able to mention anything that hasn't already been looked at. It's just one of those things that there's a difficult problem there we're finding a solution to. And hopefully, that changes. As Counselor Cody Davis said, we continue to try to work to rectify the problem, and we do have the Joe Byrne Stadium that the program will initiate and get started in the fall. And I would love nothing more, I'm sure all of us would like nothing more, than to be able to inform the gymnastics club this week that we have space for them. And we thought we did. And as Counselor Cody Davis said, it fell through. But it's a difficult situation when we can't find suitable space. We are looking at big costs for new infrastructure. I'm not suggesting that that would not be something we would look at, but we have a lot of things to consider when it comes to the financial implications of that as we explained in our meeting and the other challenges. So I just wanted to add a little bit on to what Counselor Cody Davis had to say on the gymnastics and as well as Counselor Feener, because I know everybody has been very frustrated, and I know everybody very much supports that program. So thanks for that. Any other comments on the community services minutes? Hearing none, we got a mover and a seconder. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Aye. Country-minded. Motion carried. Next up is Public Works and Development. Counselor Dewire, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The following are the minutes for Public Works and Development, held five P.M. Wednesday, July twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one. Present were myself as chairperson, members Mayor Barry Manuel, Counselor Mark Whiffen, Counselor Rod Bennett, and Counselor Sean Feener. Staff in attendance were Darren Finn, our Chief Administrative Officer, Nelson Chapman, Director of Public Works and Development, Steve Goss, Director of Corporate Services, and Robin Haniford, our Communications Officer. Two sixty Grand Falls Heights. The committee discussed a request from the resident at two sixty Grand Falls Heights to continue cleaning up some of the town-owned land adjacent to his property. The original request was to cut some fallen trees, but they since have cleared close to point-two-three hectares and constructed a road and a ditch on town property. The resident is now requesting to complete additional cleanup and to do some landscaping on town property. The committee recommends this request be denied and inform the resident that no further work is to take place on town property. If it continues, the town needs to take legal action. Environmental Assessment, Rushi Pond. The committee was advised of an undertaking that was registered under the Department of Environment and Climate Change to replace the bridge at Rushi Pond on the Trans-Canada Highway just west of the town. The proposed plan is to construct a temporary bypass, demolish and remove the existing structure, and replace with a new one in the same location. The department reached out to council to see if there were any comments or concerns with the proposal. The committee are pleased that this work is being undertaken and recommends that no action be taken as there are no negative effects to the town. Land Request, Twelve River View Road. The committee reviewed a request from the resident at Twelve River View Road to purchase approximately one hundred and sixty-point-five-seven square meters of backland. The committee recommends this request be approved and sold as per policy. The meeting adjourned at five thirty-five P.M., and I move the recommendations and report of this committee.
Okay, it's been moved by Counselor Dewire. Looking for a second.
Second, Deputy Mayor Brown.
Second from Deputy Mayor Brown. Any discussion, comment on the Public Works and Development minutes?
Just a few comments, Mr. Mayor, with respect to the new bridge being constructed just west of the town, near the golf course. Long overdue. I'm confident the provincial government have spent more on that bridge over the past twenty years than any other bridge in the island. But it's good they finally realized that it needs to be replaced, and it will make a huge difference. That bridge is quite often temporarily out of order, down to one lane, et cetera. So good news for the Rushi Pond Brook Bridge. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Brown. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none. We have a mover and a seconder. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Country-minded. Motion carried. Okay, we do have a resolution to deal with. So Counselor Dewire, I'd ask you to deal with that, please.
Certainly. Resolution GFW two thousand twenty-one dash three-two-four, Gas Tax Agreement Amendment, two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-four. Whereas the funding for the Federal Provincial Administrative Agreement and the federal gas tax fund for two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-four has been amended, and whereas the Town of Grand Falls Windsor has reviewed the allocations for the amendment based on the two thousand sixteen census population data, therefore, be it resolved that the Town of Grand Falls Windsor Council approves the ultimate recipient gas tax agreement, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-four, received on August sixth, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, it's been moved by Counselor Dewire. Looking for a seconder.
Counselor Cody.
Seconded by Counselor Cody Davis. Any discussion or comment on the resolution? Hearing none.
I'd like to comment.
Oh, go ahead, Counselor Dewire.
Little delay. I just wanted to state what the amount was. So the amount that is included in this amendment is six hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars, which brings the gas tax amount for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two year to one million, two hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other discussion or comment on the resolution? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Country-minded. Motion carried. Next up is Corporate Services. Counselor Whiffen, please.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. The Corporate Services Committee met at five thirty P.M. on Wednesday, July twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one. Present were Mayor Barry Manuel as acting chair, members Counselor Holly Dewire, Counselor Mark Whiffen, Deputy Mayor Mike Brown, Counselor Sean Feener, Counselor Rod Bennett. Staff in attendance were Darren Finn, Chief Administrative Officer, Robin Haniford, Communications Officer, Nelson Chapman, Director of Public Works and Development, Steve Goss, Director of Corporate Services. Cash Collection Report. The committee reviewed taxation collection for June, two thousand twenty-one. Total taxation receivable as of that date was five million, four hundred seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred eighty-one, which is a decrease of one million, six hundred thirty-nine thousand, four hundred seventy-four, or twenty-three-point-zero-four percent from the previous year. The committee recommends that staff continue to work with residents and businesses to get all outstanding taxes paid as soon as possible. In addition, the residents are reminded to contact the Corporate Services Department at seven oh nine, four eight nine, zero four zero two to discuss payment options or set up a payment plan. Dispersment Report. The committee reviewed the dispersment report in the amount of four hundred five thousand, six hundred five and ninety-five cents and recommends this be presented at the next council meeting. Labor Report. The committee reviewed the labor costs as of week thirty. Total labor was one million, nine hundred fifteen thousand, two hundred nineteen. This was two hundred sixty-four thousand, one hundred fifty-three, or twelve-point-one percent under budget. The committee recommends that staff continue to monitor labor costs moving forward. Goodyear Avenue Parking and Ball Field Recreation Updates. The committee reviewed the tender results to complete the work under project MI thirteen, one forty-four. The only recommendable bid came in approximately sixty thousand over budget at three hundred four thousand, two hundred, three hundred four thousand, two hundred dollars plus HST. The project is cost-shared equally with the provincial and federal government. However, the excess amount would be one hundred percent town cost. The committee recommends that the staff review the components of the project to ensure everything included is required and make a further recommendation at a future meeting. The meeting adjourned at seven P.M., and I move the recommendation report of this committee.
Okay, it's been moved by Counselor Whiffen.
Second, Deputy Mayor Brown.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor. Any comment on the Corporate Services Minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Country-minded. Motion carried. Okay, next up is notice of motion. Do we have any notice of motion? No notice of motion. We'll move into other business. And I'm not certain, so correct me if I'm wrong, but I think tonight Counselor Feener is up first. Is that correct? Or does anybody know for sure? If nobody has an issue with that, we'll go ahead with Counselor Feener.
I haven't got much tonight, Mayor. I just wanna implore on the union if they can just please come back to the table so we can get this issue clarified. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Feener. So, Counselor Dewire.
Thank you. Just wanted to let residents know that the Kitchen Party Theater Company has some shows ongoing at the Arts and Culture Center. Several of us attended on Friday. Was it Friday? And it was the Come From Away Show, which is a show that is based on Grand Falls Windsor and wartime. And it's a very nice story, and there are other shows. Gordon Pincent wrote one play that they're doing, and it's just a great opportunity to get out lunchtime and evenings for one hour. And you can bring your lunch to the lunchtime show and brown bag it. And they're very accommodating that way, and it's a great, great show, great opportunity. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that. I just, I guess, will correct you on one small thing. The Come From Away is also a show I think I've heard of from somewhere else, but this was Girls From Away. So it's Girls From Away was the name of the show, and indeed, it was a great performance. And, you know, we've been saying all along that this Kitchen Party Festival, which has been anchored here, I guess, by Bernie Stapleton and Nicole Smith, the two producers, is something that we certainly expect to grow over the years and will be a big attraction for tourists as well as residents. The acting itself was fantastic. I thought the story was great and really be worth your time to check out the schedule and get to see that if you can do so. Any other comments, Counselor Dewire?
Thank you for that correction.
No problem. Okay, next up is Counselor Whiffen.
I have no other business for this week, Mayor.
Okay. Next up is Deputy Mayor Brown.
Just one thing, Mayor. The Cordray Brook Nature Center and Trail are having International Youth Day on August twelfth from two to six P.M. So I'd like to welcome all the youth from Grand Falls Windsor and surrounding areas to partake in that. There'll be games and scavenger hunts, loot bags, door prizes. And I understand Third Place Cafe and Sweet Tales and Treats will be on site as well. So I'd like to invite everybody to International Youth Day, August twelfth, from two to six at Two Conservation Place. I had a message from the association's president today, Mr. Yulet, Elmo Yulet. So only too happy to pass that information on to the general public. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Brown. Counselor Cody Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let people know that I did have the opportunity to attend the Queen Street Dinner Theater, the nighttime show, the Dolly's Country Pop Disco Show. Such amazing talent in that show, and everybody did a wonderful job. It was fantastic, thoroughly enjoyed it. I haven't had the opportunity to attend the lunchtime show, but I have heard great things about that one as well. That's, we're doing duets. I think there may be some time slots available if you haven't been able to participate or take in either of those shows. Make sure you check Queen Street Dinner Theater online. There may be some seats available where you can purchase tickets and attend those shows. Again, fantastic shows with such wonderful talent from here in Grand Falls Windsor and the central area. And just, again, just want to remind everybody to be safe this summer. Lots of activities going on, lots of traveling happening, construction on the roadway, so please drive safely on the highways. You know, practice safe boating, whatever you're doing, just please make sure you do it safely. We're into August now, so we all know that school time is just around the corner. We all have students heading off to university, back to school. The teachers will be preparing to go back to classes. You know, the restrictions have lessened here now. The mask mandate has pretty much been removed. I was out today visiting some local stores, and there were some stores that were just so crowded that I continued to wear my mask. And other stores that I went into, I had my mask with me, but there weren't many people in the store, so I did not wear my mask. So I just wanted to remind everybody that, you know, it is your prerogative if you want to continue wearing your mask, certainly, please do so. If you don't want to wear your mask, you're not mandated to wear your mask any longer. There are still, however, businesses who can require you to wear a mask upon entry. So if they do, please, you know, make sure you do have your mask with you at all times, even though it's lessened. It's a good idea to have one in your pocket or in your purse or a package in your car or something because there are still businesses and, you know, places that you will frequent that will require you to still have the mask on or ask you to please wear your mask. So just again, keep them on hand and just be respectful of everybody's choice. And carry on, and just everybody stay safe. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Cody Davis. I'm glad you mentioned the Queen Street Dinner Theater in mentioning the Kitchen Party. I certainly wouldn't want to miss that. And as we know, the intention is for those two groups to kind of feed off of each other and to work together with regards to showtimes and maybe some crossovers with performers and that sort of thing. So great job. My mom actually went to the Lunchtime Dinner Theater today and enjoyed it very much, and I always know it's a great show. The masks, you know, all we can say about that, I guess, is that, you know, it seems to be, in my mind, and I'm sure everybody, is a big milestone to get to a point now where the provincial government has been able to do this after, you know, however many long months. I think it's, what, seventeen months since we started, you know, our first virtual meeting and all the things that have come in between. So it's a good milestone, but everybody still stay safe and certainly pay attention to the rules. And as Counselor Cody Davis said, make sure to respect others. Counselor Bennett? And as Councilor Cody Davis said, make sure to respect others. Councilor Bennett.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of things on my agenda to link there. I usually throw an anniversary or birthday greeting to residents, but this one was kind of special. I'd like to wish Win Higgins and Bernie Higgins a happy 31st anniversary. I'd also like to wish Andre and Melissa Beeson a 31st wedding anniversary. And I'd also like to wish my wife a 31st wedding anniversary. And the reason why these are so special is because we got married in the same town, same day. And we knew we were getting married, but we all met at Hiscox at 2:30 in the morning before we all headed to Mount Peyton for a naycap. So, happy anniversary to my wonderful wife and Melissa and Bernie, Win and Andre. The second thing I'm going to bring up here, Mayor, is the Grand Falls Windsor Fire Department. As we all hear, our fire department numbers are down. It's probably the lowest I've ever seen it. We're down to 35 members. We need 10 members in our organization out there. I've been involved with a lot of organizations in Grand Falls Windsor over the years. But by far, our fire department is the most important organization our town has. It's very demanding, from my experience, but it's much more rewarding. You, if you're interested in being a firefighter, have a talk to a volunteer firefighter that's there or the fire chief, Vince McKenzie, deputy chief Dave Byrne, or any officers or firefighters, and ask them what is it all about. And they'll explain to you that, pretty much what I just said. But the training, the training is demanding, but what you get back out of it, knowing that you're protecting your town 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, that's more rewarding in my history of the town I serve in the Grand Falls Fire Department. This is probably the most difficult thing that's going to come up tonight from me. I have to apologize for the last meeting. I said that I was in conflict, which I'm not in conflict with anything on the go. It was just a mis, an actual words from me. That was probably the hardest thing I had to do in the last four years was that meeting. Kind of very difficult. The last one, very stressful. I've never seen stress so much in my life. I had chatted with people, and I told them I buried Mom and I buried Dad. But I've never seen so much stress as I went through over the last month. It's taken a toll on me. It's taken a toll on my family. And to stay out of everything. And as I said before, in saying that, Mayor, the comments, I was hoping to get an apology from you tonight, from the comments that you had made, said that I was in conflict, and I was not. I had a phone call that night to do a TV interview, and I said, "No," I said, "I'm going to talk to Municipal Affairs in the morning, see what rights I do have and what I don't have." And after an hour and 37 minutes on the phone with Municipal Affairs, I found out what I actually can do and what I can't do. And then Colleen Lewis called me at 11 o'clock, and I said, "No," I said, "I'm not going to do an interview." No, I really think I ought to contact the mayor and ask for an apology for what he had said. I don't think it was warranted. Colleen told me that morning that the town put a press release out saying that I was not in conflict. And, you know, I researched everything. I was on the phone for hours, and I didn't do anything wrong. And I haven't done nothing wrong. And in the future, I will do nothing wrong. So, you know, that's where I stand right now. So, that's it for me tonight, Mayor. Thank you so much.
Well, another surprise. I wish you had contacted me, Councilor Bennett, and asked me for that, but...
Mr. Mayor?
I will say...
I did contact our...
Sorry, sir. Sorry. I'll speak there, Councilor Bennett, and you can speak again after if you so wish. I'm confused as to what you want an apology over. You had declared yourself in conflict at the beginning of the entire process of negotiations back in, I don't know, October, November 2020. You had made a post three weeks or four weeks or five weeks ago, I can't remember now, making sure that everybody knew that you were in conflict on this issue because you had a spouse who works in the union. You, not last meeting, but the meeting before, had stood up again and announced that you were in conflict on that issue. And then at last meeting, you had said you're in conflict on the issue as well. So, all I had done was say what you said. And you've been saying you're in conflict all along, so I don't understand why we're saying the same thing, but you would want an apology, so I'm confused over that. If you are thinking that I was accusing you of being in conflict in council chamber, well, I certainly would have been clear to that, and that was not what I was doing. And I'm sure that was clear on the video, which I haven't seen. If there is a conflict amongst councillors in any issue, it needs to be pointed out by other councillors or, in your case, and in some other cases, it has to be announced, I guess, or recognized by the councillor, the mayor themselves. So, I'm kind of surprised to hear too that you are just getting that advice from Municipal Affairs when you declared yourself in conflict 10 months ago. So, I'm not sure what I'm to apologize for. I did not say you were in conflict in council chambers. I acknowledge that you're in conflict, which you, sir, have said over and over and over again. So, if you can clarify what it is you're looking for an apology for that's any different, then I'd like to hear it.
Mayor, your exact words, and I watched the video numerous times, was Councilor Bennett is in conflict. He has made it clear on social media, I believe, and around the community. And I would also would challenge his stance on staying neutral in this, around the community, in what he has to say. Mayor, I just come up and apologized. I had the gall to apologize for what I had said last week, that I was in conflict. But it was just a nervous time. I am not in conflict. I said that at the meeting before, and I've said it many times before. So, I have nothing to do with this. Either way, either side, and I said it right from the beginning, and I have not. As for me sitting down with my wife in my house, I can discuss anything I want. There is no law in Newfoundland or Labrador will get there and say that I can't discuss anything with my wife. And I know my wife is a union member, and I am a councillor in Grand Falls Windsor. But anything that we discuss in our house, it's our business. So, that's exactly what you had said last week, and I'd just like for you to apologize for the fact that you said that I was in conflict and has made it clear on social media, I believe, and around the community, and would also would challenge his stance on staying neutral in this. I don't, I don't, I don't see, you know, I mean, listen, you know what, Mayor?
Good day.
You know what, Mayor? I'm sorry. I think I still got the floor. If you don't want to apologize, if you don't want to apologize, I have no issue with it, okay? I think it warrants an apology, but if you don't want to apologize, that's fine. I'll move on to the next election, and we'll see what goes on from there. Thank you.
You seem to have already moved on to the next election, Councilor Bennett, and I will clarify once again. And you just read it yourself. I said you were in conflict, just like you've been saying on social media and you said in the public meetings. You're the one who said you're in conflict, Councilor Bennett, over and over. I was just repeating what you had said. You're in conflict. As for the challenge on you staying out of it, you're getting your information from the same source as everybody else, right? Now, you haven't been involved in these discussions. For 10 months, you have no input and no knowledge of what has been discussed from the town because you had said you're in conflict. So, if I was going to say that you were in conflict as a councillor in the council chamber, then I would put that as a matter before council, which the legislation calls for, and get council to vote on that. That's how it works. So, all I did was say what you were saying. You said you're in conflict. You said you're in conflict at the beginning. You said you're in conflict on social media. You said you're in conflict at the meeting prior, and you said you're in conflict again. So, by me saying that you're in conflict in that quoted message you just said, I was only repeating what you had said. You said you were in conflict. As for, so I don't see how that warrants apology. As for challenging you on the other things, well, you know, it's a small town. And we all know things, hear things, people talk. So, all I was saying is that, basically, that I know that you haven't been staying out of it in the public because you have been going around undermining me and arresting us council for the last couple of months, at least, because people continue to tell me that that's what you've done. So, if you want an apology for me saying you're in conflict, you've said you're in conflict. How could I apologize for saying something that you made very clear yourself? Secondly, if we're going to look for apologies, I would ask you, Councilor Bennett, to apologize to council and to the community. You've started your campaign as council. You made that clear again tonight. And a resident on social media asked you what you did in the last four years. What were your achievements? And I read it, and I was flabbergasted because you said you made a promise to yourself to get back to everybody in 24 hours, which I'm sure you have, and then you went on to say that you were instrumental in Grand Falls Windsor becoming the hub of agriculture in the province. And I said to myself, "How could he say that? How could he say that?" Like, we all know here, and our staff certainly knows that that's not true. So, if you wanted to call for apologies, then why don't you apologize to this group for saying something that's totally not true? You can't take credit for something that this council's been involved in and something that I have been involved in. And I know there was one time I couldn't go, and you filled in for me. Is that why you're instrumental? So, is this what we're going to expect over the next several weeks? Is credit grabbing when it's not warranted? So, we could go on all night, and there's lots of other things as well. But I'm not going to mention them here now, but I'm surprised that you decided to take this to the public meeting again. And to me, it's just your second performance in a row. So, campaign has started. There's no doubt about it. I will call for a motion to adjourn. I don't have anything else. Just want everybody to enjoy the rest of the summer.
September 28th, people. Great. Thank you. So, good night. Thank you, Mayor.
Hold on. Like, Councilor Bennett, like, you stood up at the last meeting. You stood up at the last council meeting, and you made a point of saying you were in conflict, and you were staying out of the issue of negotiations, as you had said before.
That has nothing to do with it. That has nothing to do...
Hold on, hold on.
It don't. Sorry, Mayor. You get to speak all the time. Listen, you have to throw me under the bus two or three times. That's fine. You knew all of this when the mess was back myself and the CIO.
Give me an example of when I threw you under the bus, Councilor Bennett?
Just then.
What?
I was in B.C. for nine days. I was traveling west to Grand Falls Windsor to Maui.
What?
I was in west, I was in west in B.C. selling Grand Falls Windsor to Maui for agriculture.
Councilor Bennett.
You can continue on, do what you want.
No, no. If you're going to accuse me, if you're going to accuse me of throwing you under the bus, Councilor Bennett...
Have a great night, and we'll talk to you soon. Take care. Good night.
You go ahead. We can continue on. So, Councilor Bennett, just for the people who may be tuned in, we've been looking at the agriculture industry in central Newfoundland, in particular Grand Falls Windsor, for, I'm going to say, five or six years now. The main person on staff who has been in charge of that is Stan Singh, our Business Development Officer. Since that time, I was appointed by council to be the representative to to go to aquaculture conferences, to attend meetings, to do all those things. And I did so multiple times, regular meetings with the aquaculture, modern day, the organization of Newfoundland. I can't remember now what the name is. But we had had many meetings there. I had gone to meetings in British Columbia as well with an ACOA-sponsored trip. And there was one time I couldn't make it, and Councilor Bennett went in my place. And that's what he's referring to. So, I'm sure he was selling Grand Falls Windsor in B.C. while he was there for those four days. But I've been working on this for six years, and I'm not looking for any credit, because this is a team. This is council. We all are involved. And, you know, for Councilor Bennett to suggest, and then when I ask how I'm throwing him under the bus, and he's going to say I'm throwing him under the bus because he's saying he was instrumental in agriculture in Grand Falls Windsor being the hub, when it's not true, he threw himself under the bus. So, for me, again, the conflict accusation, I still am very confused because Councilor Bennett had said himself multiple times that he's in conflict, and I was just acknowledging what he had told us many times. With regards to agriculture, we continue to work with Maui, and sadly, I guess, or we aren't the hub of agriculture in central Newfoundland or the province as yet. There's agriculture going on all over the province and Marystown and on the south coast of the province, not just in Harbor Breton and St. Albans and area, but over towards Bergio. And agriculture is a great industry, and we have tried to be proactive to bring agriculture companies like Galeforce, who have set up here in town, to come to town. So, and Maui, we've met with several times and want them to set up here because we believe that agriculture is going to be a big industry in the future, and we want to capitalize on that as a community and be the hub, but we're not yet. And I guess, you know, Councilor Bennett, I believe, was in St. John's, as I was, for an aquaculture conference, I'm going to say about a year and a half, two years ago. And I had attended, of course, all the conference and everything. They were having the closing dinner. I got two sons in St. John's, so I had taken them out to supper so I could seat them while I was in the city and didn't make it to the aquaculture final dinner. At that dinner, I got a message from Councilor Bennett saying that I had won the Agriculture Ambassador Award, given out by the Newfoundland Agriculture Association. So, again, I just want to speak in facts, and I will continue to do that. The people can challenge me. But all people who are sitting here tonight and staff certainly know that I've said nothing out of the way, and I've said nothing with regards to me ever taking any credit for agriculture, and this is more than I've said ever here tonight, because I recognize that we all have a part to play. And I won't go on because I don't want to bring up anything different than what we've already talked about with Councilor Bennett having left the meeting. So, I will leave it at that. I do believe that Deputy Mayor Brown has a motion to adjourn.
Correct, Mayor.
And I'll look for a second.
Actually, Mayor, could I have a moment?
You're on mute there, Councilor Cody Davis?
Sorry, I pressed the button.
Did you want to speak?
Yeah, no, I was just asking if I could have a moment before we adjourn. I was trying to search up the Municipalities Act to get the exact definition. But the reason that Councilor Bennett declared that he was in conflict of interest with regards to union negotiations is because there is a direct financial impact on him because his spouse is a member of the union of Grand Falls Windsor. So, he definitely is in conflict, which is why he recognized it back when... So he definitely is in conflict, which is why he recognized it back when we were beginning negotiations and council agreed that yes, you definitely are in conflict and that you should no longer be involved in any of these, uh, conversations with regards to negotiations. So that has been clear. Um, I'm like you, I don't understand what the backtracking is or why the apology has been requested. Um, we have done nothing but acknowledge, um, that he is in conflict, that he declared he is in conflict and that there should be no further conversation with him included. The, um, the last 10 months have been brutal for us. And, I mean, if he's saying he's not in conflict, then I would like to know why he has not been involved in the last 10 months of conversations and negotiation and ups and downs and social media battles and back and forths with council, um, with the community, the extended conversations that we've had. Like, it's one or the other. Either you're in conflict and you remove yourself or you're not in conflict and you participate in the conversations. So I would like Councilor Bennett to clarify, does he think he's not in conflict and does he want us to vote that yes, he is in conflict and for us to remove him from future, future conversations? Or does he want to come back involved and become involved in the ca- in the, uh, continuing negotiations and continuing conversations with council as we move through the remaining, uh, days, weeks, whatever we're facing with regards to the lockout?
Okay, uh, thanks, Councilor Cody Davis. I do, uh, want to add something, uh, again, uh, just because I'm thinking as you're talking. And I'm still confused as to why someone would ask me to apologize for sa- for saying they're in conflict when they said it themselves so many times. I was just pointing out what, uh, he had already identified. Uh, but the last meeting, in a public meeting, uh, Councilor Bennett chose to get up and to have his say. I can't remember. I can't quote him because I didn't go back and listen as he did. Uh, but I know that he got up and said that he wants people to know that council's not united on this. Council's not united on this topic of negotiations. He said, "I'm not involved." In other words, he's, he's not united. He's not with us. He doesn't believe in what we're saying. To me, he was standing up in the public chamber and using that very topic that he says he's in conflict on to make some kind of, I don't know what to call it, because he went on to, uh, resign from the Finance Committee or the Corporate Services Committee as Chair, which none of us were aware of and I don't see the connection unless you're trying to be firm. "I'm not with ye. You guys know what's on my..." And then tonight in the meeting, he chooses to refer to the election and goes off, "September 28th, September 28th." Like, a political campaign does not belong in the council chamber. And for Councilor Bennett to use it as such, I asked the citizens, "Who should be apologizing?" So again, uh, enough on that. And, uh, if anybody else has something to say, say it now. If not, do that Deputy Mayor Brown making a move for adjournment, uh, looking for a second.
Councilor Whiffen.
Councilor Whiffen. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. See you next time.
Okay, all councillors and staff can mute their mics. Um, thank you very much for joining us, the town council and to our staff members who are on. Um, and thank you to the public for attending. Once again, we'll have this meeting posted on YouTube probably tomorrow morning. Uh, thank you for joining us and have a great night. Thank you.